Staff, welcome to the Committee of the Whole meeting Wednesday, January 18. Members of council will start with a roll call. Oh, sorry.
It's hard to hear you, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry.
You have to speak a little closer to the chair.
Okay.
The gunner's here, so I got a lot of change required.
So let I will shift everything to the left. Is that and I'll sit this way? Is that better? Okay. So I'll call the meeting to order and welcome. Okay, good. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Now you've got me off my my schedule here. Declarations of interest, please. Oh, roll call, please, Mr. Clerk. Counselor Chauvin, you've got me flustered. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This will be it. This will be an electronic roll call. Please press yes on your panels when the vote begins.
Okay, thank you. Members of council, declarations of interest? Mr. Clerk, none online? Seeing none, we'll continue. Members of council, this is the first time that I am using the new device that controls the meetings. You'll have to push request when you'd like to speak. I will control your microphone for you, so you won't have to worry about pushing the mic button. And there are no statutory public meetings. Our first our only presentation is Mr. Robert Bell, co-founder of the Intelligent Community Forum. And could I have Ms. Austin do an introduction, please, to this?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Thank you and good morning, members of council. On the agenda today, you will see a report outlining our updates for the Intelligent Communities portfolio. We've been on this Intelligent Communities journey since about 2018 and have made some pretty significant progress in five short years. And so rather than having me tell you about some of our projects and some exciting developments that we're hoping for in the future, we thought we'd hear directly from Robert Bell. And he's going to tell you a little bit about why Durham Region was selected among multiple municipalities across the world as one of internationally the world's top seven intelligent communities for 2022. So as Robert is joining and getting situated, I'd like to let you know that Robert is the co-founder of the Intelligent Communities Forum, where he leads the research, analysis, and content development activities. He's the author of the ICF's founding study, Benchmarking the Intelligent Community, and has contributed to articles in the Municipal Journal of Telecommunications Policy, International Economic Development Journal, and more. Thank you for that. He's appeared in segments of ABC World News and the Discovery Channel and leads economic development missions and study tours across Asia and the U.S. So for the next 10 minutes or so, we'll have Robert tell you all about the wonderful things underway in Durham Region. And Robert, we can't hear you. If you can, please address your microphone. Thank you.
Mr. Bell, there should be a button in the lower center of your screen to request to speak.
I didn't realize that I required that. Hello, can you hear me now? No.
Yes, we can.
You can. Okay. Well, thank you very much. What I had been saying, apparently just to myself, was thanks, first of all, to Sandra for her opening remarks, and thanks to all of you for allowing me some time to come and speak to you today from near the New York metropolitan area. I believe there's a presentation accompanying what we're doing here? There we are. Thank you very much. If you go to the first the next slide, I'd appreciate it. Okay, so this this process that was referred to, the the top seven intelligent community is part of our international award program, the Intelligent Community Awards. And just very briefly, what we do in that is we maintain a database of something around 400 communities which were constantly refreshing, including, for instance, Durham submitted some new data for 2022, which was very valuable to us. From that, every year, we we go through that list and we select 21 communities that we believe represent the the most important communities for to learn from in the current year. And this year Durham was one of those smart 21 communities of the year. We then, in addition to the next stage in the process, we will ask for more information, sometimes a great deal of narrative information about what's going on in the community, about how you're accomplishing what you're accomplishing. And from that, a group of independent analysts select our top seven intelligent communities. We down select from 21 to seven. And then in the final stage of the process, we have an international jury that weighs in and reviews a bunch of material and votes, and their scores get added in, and one of those seven rises to the top. So it's a rigorous process, and it's a very serious one. So you are very much to be congratulated for being having been named one of our top seven in 2022. Next slide, please. So then the question arises, why? What makes Durham a top seven intelligent community? And I'm going to go through this very briefly because you know more about it probably than I do. Next slide, please. There's quite a number of factors that contribute to this. Before I go into that, just, you know, when we say intelligent community, what are we talking about? We have a very specific thing in mind. In a world dominated by digital, intelligent communities do very hard work across six factors to create innovative and growing economies, because without that, you don't really have anything else to work with, right? Inclusive societies, and by that we really mean economically inclusive societies. Again, if you're economically inclusive, other forms of inclusivity tend to follow that. And if you're not, it's very hard to get there. And lastly, they create affirming cultures, cultures that tell individuals, that tell organizations, yes, you can, and you can do it here. And those those cultures tend to be open to the world, because that's where ideas, that's where innovation, that's where investment comes from. And they do all these three things by tapping this enormous potential that technology has to do good for the community. We know that that digital technologies in particular have many kinds of impacts, but they do have this enormous potential. So, next slide, please. So the top seven intelligent communities of the year, if you could click it again, please. One of the factors that we looked at was your regional broadband network. Impressive project, and it had the combination of factors that we tend to look at. It was, first of all, ambitious. It's the idea of connecting, providing back fiber backbone to reach your unserved and underserved rural communities. And it also had significant progress. You actually got a project funded, you got part of it built. And so that's a great opening. Next one, please. Education, obviously, we all know how important it is, but but in intelligent communities, it's structured as a real ladder of opportunity, real ladder of opportunity. So you have all these things going on. You have the Ontario Tech building maker spaces in your schools, high skills majors. You have 30,000 secondary school students in your region, and 70% of them are in work-study or co-op programs. That's a great foundation, if you will, of that ladder of opportunity. So we definitely saluted that. Next, please. Innovation in business and government. Innovation is where all growth ultimately comes from. And so you have got the beginnings of an innovation ecosystem, as we call it, that that culture and set of services that help companies get started and help small companies grow, supported by universities, supported by your accelerators and other other facilities that you've put in place. You've also got some big players, notably OPG, with its various research activities going on, that are helping to drive, you know, helping to create that that critical mass of of innovation that's going to change the culture and the future of Durham Region. Next, please. We also think that intelligent communities need to take care of their of take care of their communities. It's good to build innovation, it's good to build a workforce that can can work at those innovative companies and have that network, but you've also got to take care of the folks who aren't necessarily going to jump on that bandwagon all by themselves. So you have the your Durham, sorry, your Durham Online Engagement Program. We tend to like these things, and particularly like them for a regional organization like yours, because you've got a big area to cover, and there's not too many other effective ways to get people to contribute. And I know those are always hard to make work, but but when they work, they're great. Your Anti-Black Racism Engagement Program, just as we read it, is a model of its kind and worth calling out. Next, please. You also look after the people who are not digitally included, who have not already decided or cannot afford or cannot reach digital assets. So you have a Senior Citizen Digital Inclusion Program in Oshawa. And this very clever My Durham 311 program, I don't actually know how successful it's going to be long term, but the idea that you can just talk to your smart speaker and get answers to your questions about the region, that's potentially powerful. And finally, your community energy plan, again, I think a model of its kind because it it comes out of collaboration with the community, but it also, you know, focuses on the key things that you can do something about. Energy efficiency retrofit, big ambitious plan, progress being made, and a huge potential outcome by 2050, as well as your drive to to make electric vehicle adoption go faster than it otherwise will, charging infrastructure, public education about it, your conversion of your municipal fleet. So these are all things that very much, you know, made the Durham Region deserve its top seven nomination. That's however, was 2022, that's the past. And I want to just take my last couple of minutes to talk to you about the potential future. Next slide, please. Well, one more, please. There we go. What can intelligent communities ultimately accomplish? Because that's really what we care most about. I'm going to tell you the story of a place called Dublin, Ohio. It's a small city to the north and east, I should say, of Columbus, the state capital, part of a large metro suburban region, as is common in many, many places. Population about 49,000 people. Next slide, please. It's an affluent bedroom community, and it's very successful. I mean, it's got a historic downtown, it's got arts and culture, including, I think, the world's largest collection of large concrete corn cubs, has a PGA-quality golf course that hosts international tournaments. It's just a great place to live if you can afford to live there, and indeed, many, many very wealthy people do live there. Next slide. That has helped to make it a corporate campus location, right? So you have Ashland, which is a big U.S.-based chemical company, Wendy's, the burger chain, Cardinal Health, a big U.S. insurer, have all moved their corporate headquarters out of other locations and brought them here because of the great quality of life. And again, typical pattern, right? So you by now, you should have an image in your mind of this place, right? Privileged, affluent, lot of money sloshing around, a lot of opportunity, probably kind of a quiet place. But that's actually not Dublin. Next slide. They've never been satisfied to rest in their laurels. So starting back in 2000, shortly after the United States deregulated communications, they decided to build a network. They called it Double Link. And it has some particular qualities. It was a dark fiber network, meaning that they built the thing, and this is a public-private venture, they had a company build it with them. That dark fiber network is just consists of those glass fibers in the conduit in the ground. They did not want to deliver service because they did not want to get sued by their local telephone company or their cable company. So the only service that they they lit up, as we say when we talk about fiber, was for their own for government communications. And that's almost always a win, because you stop writing checks to the telephone company, and instead you deliver the service yourself. So that was, you know, successful on just a simple cash flow basis. But what made it really successful was the fact that they went out on the basis of that new asset and did deals. They did interconnection deals and capacity sharing deals with a large number of organizations, the Ohio Supercomputer Center, bringing supercomputing capacity into Dublin for the purposes of its companies and its universities. Central Ohio Broadband, a big provider in the area, Columbus Carrier Hotels. These carrier hotels are places where telecommunications carriers connect to each other and exchange traffic. They're critically important, like any crossroads in the world, in terms of becoming influential in telecom. And of course, since they had this, they used it for public benefit inside Dublin. They used it as the backbone for a big Wi-Fi network that supports events like their PGA tournaments, their first responder networks, video monitoring, so on. So very nice project, produced a lot of results, has kept growing, cash flow positive, so they can keep investing in it, and they keep doing those deals. But they didn't stop there. Next slide, please. The question actually that we challenged them with was, how do you turn this into money? How do you turn this into economic impact? And so they took that challenge. And in the 2010s, they invested about $625,000 of taxpayers' money in something called Rev One Ventures, which ran a big accelerator program in Columbus. And so Rev One Ventures came up and opened up a facility in Dublin. And over the course of two years, by nurturing some small, some startup companies, some small companies, helping them get customers, helping them get investors, that yielded for almost $15 million in either additional financing coming into those companies or new revenues those companies were actually generating. That's kind of remarkable. They opened the Dublin Entrepreneurial Center, which is one tenant when they started. They're now up to 50-plus support organizations, hosting events, doing training. They set up a Center for Global Business Development at this facility, because, again, they're open to the world. They want to help Dublin companies reach a global marketplace, which is not something that most Dublin company in the middle of the United States would necessarily think to do. But with the help of the city, they're doing it. All of this, over the course of a decade, has made Dublin home to about 3,000 companies, and the average number of employees of those companies is seven. And if you just think about those corporate campus locations, obviously, they have a lot of people. That tells you how many small entrepreneurial companies there are. And this is the kicker. They've got that population of just under 50,000, their labor force is 75,000. So what used to be a bedroom community in Columbus has reversed the flow, is now the hub that many, many people come to work from other bedroom communities surrounding it. That's a remarkable thing for a small city to accomplish. Next slide, please. And having done that, they then began, they raised their their view to the region. One of the first things they did, because, again, they're economically successful, they were able to attract property developers, and they had those property developers create a complete new district called the Bridge District. It's across the river from from the downtown, named for this beautiful bridge they built. And it has exactly one purpose, which is to provide a home for new companies and millennial employees who don't who don't necessarily want to live in an affluent suburb, they want to live in a condo and be able to walk across the street to their office, and then just down the street to a coffee shop, the pub, the restaurant. You can see it's kind of a fun and happening place, and it was, you know, I thought it was a very clever development on their part. Did without disrupting, you know, what people love about Dublin, they created this new energy. And then there is the Route 33 Smart Mobility Corps, and I'm going to end there, and I appreciate your patience. Could you go to the next slide, please? This is a project that Dublin played a leadership role in all along the way, energizing people, part getting them to partner, getting them to collaborate. There is a stretch of highway called Route 33 that runs into Dublin and through Dublin and out the other side. And they led this formation of a partnership with other cities, with the county government, and with the big automotive manufacturer Honda, which has a vast plant near near Dublin, and with the aim of attracting and retaining smart mobility companies, right? Connected cars, autonomous cars, semi-autonomous vehicles of all kinds, and and focus them in this regional manufacturing cluster, because Dublin would certainly benefit from that, as well as the other cities and counties involved. And on the strength of that partnership and a lot of hard work with foundations, as well as state government, they were able to obtain funding and install a fiber network along 35 miles of that highway with a set of short-range transmitters along the way. And then they managed to get 1,200 public and private vehicles to install transmitter-receivers on the other side of that, to begin to be able to now say, well, what does it really mean to be a connected vehicle? How does it actually improve your operation? What are the problems it creates? How do we solve those problems? And so they've created this unique test bed that's not it's not a track somewhere that you go around in a circle, it's not a laboratory, it's a road, and it has it has sunshine and has heat, it has rain, it has sleet and snow, it has Ohio weather. And that's a unique asset, and you can tell that it is because they managed in one year to attract $200 million in total investment, including that network, from government and private companies. So, next slide, please, final slide. You know, what does all of this mean? What can intelligent communities accomplish? Well, you see in the in the story of Dublin, starting out very small and very local, and then thinking larger and more regionally and going from there. So the takeaways are that a smart strategy like this, step by step, can create major positive change, right? We have seen over and over again, as we study cities and counties, that creating and maintaining progress is the most powerful thing you can do. You hope it's a big win, that's nice if you can get it, but it's that progress, year in, year out, that makes the ultimate difference. And to get that progress to actually contribute to your long-term goals, you have to think both long term and short term, right? Your next projects need to obviously produce value, they need to, you know, so that they're not canceled, they need to be cash flow positive, or whatever the measure is. But at the same time, it's very important to think about how they support the creation of this innovative and growing economy, this inclusive society, this affirming culture. And in doing this, regional partnerships are powerful, and boy, is Durham ahead of the game, because you've already got this immensely strong foundation, though I'm sure you're aware of all the problems it has. Fine, it's always, things always look worse from the inside than they look on the outside. But that foundation is really important, because the region is really going to be your your center of strength. And the final piece of advice that I'll just leave you with, and again, with thanks for for the time you spent with me, never stop. And that's hard to do in a democracy where governments, you know, parties change, and there's a, you know, we like to have, if you will, a certain amount of churn in our leadership to maintain its freshness and its vitality, but creating continuity within leadership to let to allow you to never stop, that is a key driver of success. So that brings me to the conclusion of this. Thank you again very much. I have been very impressed with Durham, and I'm wishing you all the best in the coming years.
Okay, thank you. Questions to Mr. Bell or Ms. Austin? First in the chat box is Counselor Yamada.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Bell, for coming in. The information presented in your presentation and the report were really interesting. And, you know, talking about what Durham Region has been able to accomplish, but taking a look at some of the other communities referenced, one being New Taipei City in Taiwan, which was announced as the most intelligent community of the year. What best practices do you feel that we can take away from a community like that and apply it to our community here in Durham Region? Thank you.
Well, thank you for that question, because you just defined why ICF exists. What we want, what we want to do is to help cities and regions learn from each other so they don't reinvent the wheel. New Taipei City, of course, unique situation, different culture. The city was created out of a bunch of smaller cities. It's actually one of the more unusual places. It's shaped like a donut, and Taipei is in the middle of it, the national capital. So they received a lot of money to to make that happen, and they spent it on things like transportation, to make sure that they had, just one example, all the transit, the rail transportation in the area went radially, radially, it went connected to the center of Taipei outward. And what they did was build this massive system to create a circle, right, so you could move around in it. They focused enormously on on things to bring together these disparate groups, and I think that might be a lesson that Durham, you know, a lot of different municipalities within you, within your your structure, the wildly different needs and wildly different probably points of view, I'm just guessing. What they they focused on a lot of factors, so that transportation was one of them, let's make us all one. And I know that you've you've done some work, for instance, with the autonomous shuttle to begin to, you know, work that problem. Another thing they did that I thought was fascinating was cultural. They, and again, this is because this is Taiwanese culture, it tends to be more top-down than we're comfortable with here in in North America. But they they basically came up with a plan that said, we want every one of these former cities, now districts of New Taipei City, to develop a unique cultural offering. And so when I was there last, I was taken to their indigo, their district, where dying things with blue indigo is a longstanding tradition, and they've turned it into a tourism opportunity. And you can come there, and you can stay in hotels that are themed properly, and you can, you know, experiment with with dying and visit museums and art supply, art, sorry, you know what I mean, galleries is the word I'm looking for. And they have these all around, and the whole point there is to encourage people in New Taipei City to visit other parts of this New Taipei City that they need to start thinking about as being their new home, not just the city that they thought they lived in before the amalgamation. So I think there's a lot of very low-cost cultural opportunities that you may be able to leverage to help people identify more with some of the successful regional programs that you're creating to reduce everybody's costs, to share, you know, to share the cost among all of the region's people, and not just have one one city or town have to fund everything itself.
Counselor Mayor.
By the way, sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead, please.
I was just going to say, you're welcome at any time to go to our website and look at our, the Intelligent Community Network. We have reasonably detailed profiles on most of these communities, and usually there's a few nuggets in there that you can you can take away.
Thank you. Counselor Mayor Pietri.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning to everyone. Mr. Bell, just wanted to ask, what are the challenges that you see for a municipality like ours? We have a number of different topographies, some of the weather is different from one area of the region to the next. Just, how do you see some of the the smart improvements in other areas, such as, for example, your favorite place, Dublin, being relevant in in the region of Durham, and and just basically relative to the challenges that we we have?
Thank you. Again, great question. And I don't pretend to be an expert, but while I was in Durham, I had wonderful opportunities to talk to people about some of the challenges, you know, that are faced. I think one of them is perception. So much of the rest of the GTA has, you know, boomed, and for a variety of reasons, Durham has, you know, felt itself somewhat left behind, and that's a tough thing to reverse in people's minds. And yet, I've always, over and over again, it's reinforced to me that changing people's minds is is the hardest and also the most powerful thing you can do. So I think that public communications around that can make a, begin to make a difference in terms of it. The other issue has to do with, you know, to replicate what Dublin and many other communities have done, does take a certain critical mass of money, whether it's, you know, larger companies that want to invest in smaller companies, or you manage to attract some some capital, or, in the case of Dublin, this Rev One Accelerator, they put some money into. As I understand it, and again, I'm happy to be corrected, Durham is still suffers that that rural and specifically Canadian disease of being a branch-plant economy. It's you have a lot of of big companies there, but they don't, they're not headquartered there. They didn't grow up there. They're assembling automotive, for instance. And it's really tough to get those companies to care, you know, to say, to to say, this is the this is the hill I'm going to die on, to put it in a negative way. And I care deeply about making this place successful, because it's going to make my business successful. You need to, so we just chatted briefly at one point while I was there about, you know, possibly the need for business attraction to focus on getting you a couple of mid-sized, not big, but mid-sized companies, to give them, you know, finding a really good reason for them to locate there, to relocate there, or to help some of them grow a little faster than they otherwise would, so you can get, begin to get that critical mass, because success breeds success. If people see growth and they see it being positive, because you're growing in a careful, sustainable way, boy, that that gets a whole lot of people pretty excited. And I guess the last thing I'll say is, I, and I think this applies, it's not a specific challenge for you, but I'm often asked, how do we, you know, sort of bring everybody along? How do we, how do we get people, leaders in various parts of our region excited about this, when as opposed to just looking at us and saying, look, just go away and leave me alone? And I, my counsel is always, think about the power of positive envy. If you get a couple of champions leading the way, doing things that are really imaginative and could be applied in other parts, they're going to get attention. People may not necessarily like it at first glance, but they're going to definitely be thinking, wait a minute, why can't I do that? And that power of positive envy, it's difficult to manage properly, can be really a huge motivator to to get progress in some of those those diverse areas, if you will, where where progress is perhaps slower than you like.
Certainly, that aspect, if you look historically at even the competitive nature of the city-states and what was prior to the formation of Italy, I think you would we you would suggest the same thing historically. So I understand. So I understand that power of envy in terms of, I think the other municipalities that we work with in the region do their best to, to work with us and, and I think work together to try to put their best foot forward. But I think the, the element that you indicated through you, Mr. Chair, was the biggest challenge, which is not just cultural, but funding. So, you know, dollar for dollar, when you consider the kind of initiatives that you've put forward or that you're suggesting be undertaken, what would that equate to, you have like a formula in terms of what is considered to be currently a core service investment versus the investment in, in smart community sort of undertakings? Is there, is there an equation? How much should we be spending on either?
Gee, I wish there were. And perhaps the smarter person than me knows one. The one thing I would, I would say to you is, and this is often not a popular counsel, you know, smart city investment typically is investment in things, is investment to make things work better. They have almost no economic impact. And, and that's, that's startling if you, but if you think about it, the major, the major things for smart city investment usually are about traffic management. It's a good thing. Or water, you know, controlling our utilities better, good thing. There's very little upside economically for the region. So to me, there are things you have to do and you, you make smart city investments when you can look at the business case and say, if I spend this much this year, then in three years, I'm going to be saving a lot of money. And in five years, I'll, I'll get complete payback, just to pick some numbers out of the air. When you talk about investment, you're talking about creating an ecosystem. You're talking about creating a, a set of services and facilities in your communities that, that tap the entrepreneurial energy that is probably there. And then also in the case, again, in the case of Durham, I, I don't, don't often do this, but in the case of Durham, I do think that a business attraction element is kind of important. And again, we're not, we're in this unique period now where we've learned that you don't have to be in the place where you make a living to make a living there. And so you've got some nice assets in, in the Durham region in terms of a place to live. And with the connectivity that you're beginning to roll out, you know, you can basically make the case, you can come here and run your, your cybersecurity firm from your beautiful, you know, home over here, connecting to some other people in the region and outside the region. So I think, to, to finish this thought, you know, this is all going to happen. This is all going to proceed. The question is how fast? How fast can you make it go? And so obviously, the more you invest in creating the ecosystem, the more you invest in a couple of strategies for business development, probably the greater results you'll get. But you've already got things in place that are going to make it happen. We just would all like it to happen faster.
No, and I appreciate that.
So I'm sorry, I couldn't give you a formula.
No, not a problem. What I gathered from it was that, you know, whether it's a core service investment or a smart service investment, it's one and the same if we consider it to be beneficial for the community and, and the ROI is something that's going to, you know, transcend that one-time sort of investment. And I think through you, Mr. Chair, I completely understand, we do anyways, the, the nature of trying to attract business and, and economic development. And it's a competitive process. It's a very globalized endeavor. So we'll get to the point where we're expecting more from those who locate here. I, I think that's coming, I'm, I'm sure that that's an element of what we already, you know, discussed with those who are locating, they're blue chip companies. But I think we can go further. Maybe there's a, there's a threshold that we need to push through and, and be able to expect more for the community. And in turn, maybe have that partnership where they can invest to the level that, that you've seen in other places. And I want to get to that. That's the last question. I think the elephant in the room, or at least for me, in my mind, is a lot of the places that you've identified are culturally advanced when it comes to understanding the importance of the kind of community that, that you're talking about. North America, how do we break through in North America the mentality of, because a lot of people are busy, they're just, they just, their household is, and it's understandable. It's not just here, but everywhere, but especially here, the pace is really intense. And so their household holds much more importance than, you know, the general community at times. We've seen that more and more over the last number of years. So how do we get that cultural reality to, to be dealt with when considering these projects? Dealt with it effectively?
Yeah, that's a good one. Well, you have a unique challenge because, again, you are a regional administration covering a number of, of individual communities to which people, to the extent that they do have a loyalty outside of their household, that's probably where it starts. That's, wow, I wish I had a, I wish I had a right and ready answer for that. I think it's about, I think it's about the hard work of community building, right? And it's about, and it, it takes a long, long time because again, changing people's minds is the hardest, but also the most rewarding thing to do. So it's going to take 10 years of small-scale activities that constantly tie the place you live to the larger region and engages with you. And at first, you know, it's, at first it is always like just pushing a rock up a hill and watching it roll back down again. But after a while, you can begin to get change. And it's a matter of, you know, engaging people who are local champions and heroes and getting them to represent you. I may not want to listen to, to you, sir, but I may very well want to listen to somebody in my town whom I respect a great deal. And we've seen some very interesting digital inclusion projects, just reach over into that shelf, that involve basically creating a set of local champions in very underprivileged, very deprived neighborhoods where nobody really has any interest in this, this IT stuff. And because those local champions were able to say, hey, I, I got this computer. It's really fantastic, you know, let me show you. Completely different level of acceptance and adoption. So there are levers you can pull. In general, they're not, they don't require a lot of funding. They require some people to, to, to work on them over a long period of time. And have some fun, you know, have some fun with it. Create something that's, that's fun and attractive. I, I, that's a very simple-minded answer, but I really do think that in most cases, that's the ingredient that binds the community together.
I appreciate the opportunity to ask the questions, Mr. Chair, and thank Mr. Bell for his presentation. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Great questions.
Thank you. That exhausts the speaker's box. Mr. Bell, I want to thank you for being with us today and we wish you a wonderful day.
Thank you very much. I wish you good luck with your continued committee of the whole. It's a, can be a long day, I know. Take care.
Thank you. Delegations, there are no delegations. We'll move to reports. Mayor Foster.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's going to take a while to use these microphones. Mr. Chair, I'll give you a, a motion for a consent agenda.
Looking for secondar, seconded by, seconded by Counselor Mayor Pietri. Okay, members of council, polls. Counselor Shahid? Oh, sorry, your mic, you have to put in a request to speak.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. Okay, your microphone's on.
I had the public art report.
Public art report would be 7.2?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. I'll come back to you. Counselor Yamada?
7.4, Mr. Chair. C O W dash five.
Okay. Seeing no other requests, I will call the vote on the remainder. All those in favor? In opposition? Seeing none that carries. We'll go to report 7.2. Counselor Shahid, can you push the request button? Thank you. Okay.
Through you, Chair Henry. Thank you so much. I'm very delighted to see a policy for public art program within the Durham region. And I see that there was a collaboration with Durham College. And there will be some display at the regional building sometime soon or it's already been done, something like that. I, I'd like to know some clarities, where else can this public art be displayed? I know that this is just a policy which may be initial, but I'm looking at some sort of other stuff like art installation, some statues, some sculptures. As you know, in Whitby, we have Sir William Stephenson in outside downtown library, which was very appreciated by the residents and tourists who came in. So I'd like to see if there is some more will to go above and beyond than just paintings.
I'll go to Ms. Austin.
Thanks very much, Counselor, for the question and through the chair. Yes, that has been part of our jurisdictional scanning in terms of looking at opportunities for our installations in different locations. So internally, within the region, we have participation from a number of departments. We have works and our facilities management. We're always looking to the best advice from the asset owner. So who owns a, a piece of property or, or a facility where art might be appropriate? So I'll say one of the key areas that we have been focusing on and having discussions on has been around transit and so transit infrastructure. So at hub stops, for example, or terminals that we might be proceeding with in the coming years. Those really represent ideal locations. And they're areas where we want to see more resident traffic. And if public art can help with that community building and bringing people in, then that's certainly a fantastic opportunity. Another that we've been looking at a lot is, is in terms of things that might not be inherently attractive. Speed enforcement cameras, for example, they're gray boxes. And we're not trying to hide them. We want people to know that they're there. So why not make them colorful and, and really incorporate them into, into the fabric of the community so that people have that appreciation, that community safety is of the utmost importance to the region? But, but certainly we are looking at a variety of locations. The, the installation of, of sculpture art in, in a project like the Durham Meadowway, for example, there's a lot of real opportunities. And so by establishing the policy and establishing a governance structure, we'd be able to more carefully examine some of those potential locations. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Chair Henry. I'd like to see that this comes throughout, all throughout the region and in public spaces where residents can enjoy. And it's talked about, just like intelligent communities, art, art, and the displays talked about as well. So I'm looking forward for more and thank you so much for bringing that report. Really appreciate it.
Counselor Yamada on 7.2?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of questions. In section 2.4 of the report, it speaks to Niagara Region's culture plan. But it also talks about how this plan is used by their region to help guide local municipalities. Now, I know with our local municipality, we've put in place a culture plan to help guide public art and culture throughout the town of Whitby. I'm just wondering, how will this program that we're working help inform or collaborate with local area municipalities and the work that they're doing?
Ms. Austin?
Yes, thank you for the question and through the chair. Collaboration is, is one of the, the key pillars of, of the work that, that we do. And so we have reviewed the existing culture policies and the existing art policies among Durham municipalities that have them in place. Some do, some do not. Essentially, our, our approach is that we'll work very closely with municipalities in terms of, again, identifying locations and ensuring that whatever approach we might take aligns with policies and processes that are already in place in area municipalities where the art might be located. So I can tell you that the Lake Shore municipalities meet on a regular basis from our government and community relations staff. And there is an eagerness to work together on this. And so yes, fully recognizing that, that culture policies and art policies are already in place. And so we're really looking to extend that capacity and bring it to a regional level.
That, that's good to know because I, I know from our standpoint, over the last eight years, we've been very engaged with downtown revitalization. And, and, you know, literature on downtown revitalization really speaks to how public art can be a catalyst. What specifically can we do in terms of working with the region? And I know we've talked about collaboration, working together to really help with that driver to use public art and, and resources from the region to help us further along with downtown revitalization?
Go ahead, please.
Thank you and through the chair. I would say the, the biggest thing will be helping to support the public education and communications component as we're, we're moving forward. Certainly, we always rely on regional counselors to speak about regional initiatives in their local councils, and, and we know that that happens regularly. But the extent to which counselors and, and, and residents can help extend that message and echo that messaging when we do have public engagement surveys and, and focus groups and, and other engagement activities out for public comment, we really see this as largely a, a community-driven process, which has, which was the case in terms of the, the public art pilot that we went through in 2022. All of the, the aspects around the theme that we were going to focus on, which ended up being selected as diversity, equity and inclusion, the type of art, the, the level of, the interpretation of what diversity, equity and inclusion means for Durham region, that all came from community input.
And, and that's fabulous because we're, as I walked into the regional building today and, and saw the art right in front of the, the main entrance, I thought that was really, really good. And I, I think people like seeing public art within their community. So I hope to see more of it. Just wondering, under section six, financial implications, the report does speak to this being funded from the CEO's Office Community Relations Budget. Do we have any idea of the financial implications for this program?
Yes, and thank you for the question. First, on the, on the art that you saw walking into headquarters today, I'm pleased to advise that there will be an official unveiling at 9:00 AM on February 1st. You'll receive that information soon. But if you'd like to hold the time in your calendar. And yes, on the financial implications, I will note that we specifically did not include a dollar value. And the reason for that is, you know, we can ask, how much does a car cost? The public art pilot that we ran last year, given that we did all of the engagement internally, we leveraged partnerships. We leveraged the partnership with the Durham College Fine Arts Program to create the, the art. And we, we acted as the art direction and the jury, the kind of public structure that we're looking to establish, we did all of that internally. So the overall cost to run the entire pilot was the cost of the installation, which was less than $3,000. So what we're proposing is to identify a portion of our community and government relations base funding. So there's no, there's no budget ask in the 2023 budget to establish this program. We're looking to identify up to $30,000 for the first year. That would help with some of the potential locations that we've already identified, again, being resourceful and leveraging partnerships to the, the maximum extent possible. Having said that, if there are opportunities in the future where there is an interest in larger pieces similar to the counselor's question about structures, then those would specifically come through the regular and future business planning and budget request process. So we didn't want this to be about the financial impact as much as getting the policy right, getting the collaboration right, getting the governance right, but still getting a start. So if we can establish a couple more projects in the coming years and then look at growing the program, that ideally is our goal.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Schuman?
Thank you very much through you, Mr. Chair. Some of my questions have been answered. I, I'm, this is a very interesting program. And as you may know, there is a large artistic community in broad townships. So, so I'm looking forward to seeing how this progresses. But just following up on Counselor Yamada's question regarding the, the financial impact. So it's my understanding then that really, even though there might be some competition for, for funding under the existing budget, we're not going to see an implication in the current year. And anything that would be incremental, we'll see that possibly then for 2024 and beyond.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Foster?
Mr. Chair, thank you. A great, great program, wonderful program. My request to speak is, I, I think you'll see a number of My request to speak is, I think you'll see a number of councillors are having a challenge with the volume. If we could do something about that, a number of us are strained. And I know Ms. Austin is quiet and, you know, a little bit reticent, but turning the volume up would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Wu.
Thank you through the chair and to Ms. Austin. In the report, under 4.4, it's first bullet point, identify the clear role for councillors to provide community expertise. Can you just elaborate on that?
Yes, thank you councillor. And I'll say this is the first time that I've been called quiet, so I will make an opportunity to project my voice a little bit better. But yes, absolutely. In terms of providing community expertise, we appreciate the role that councillors play in the direct connection to the community. You are out in the community, you talk to residents on a regular basis. And so there will be, we anticipate there to be opportunities for us to engage with you directly, to ask those questions about what you're hearing from residents. So when I mentioned in response to councillor Yamada's question about what can council do, it is to help be that bridge to extend our community engagement and really to give us a sense of what you're hearing about and what the priorities are for in your communities that you're hearing directly that we might not be untapping.
Yeah, thank you for that. And again, through the chair, I certainly wholly support this, let's say endeavor, a project, certainly at the municipality and at the region. There certainly are a number of, if you want to call it public spaces that we've already used, you can just look at coming in here, whether you want to call it the indigenous crosswalk, the orange crosswalk. A number of municipalities have the rainbow crosswalk, if you want to call that public art. Just to expand on that, we had looked at that a while back, where we've had issues of graffiti and tagging. And to look at those particular, let's say, structures, it could be, you know, a bridge underpass and to have, I think at the time, we were looking at schools, probably more the high schools, the arts class to come in and do a mural. And unfortunately, you know, that didn't go too far, but that's something that we could certainly look at because once a mural is there, the likelihood of, and again, somebody coming along and graffiti or tagging it is less. But again, and being in different communities, you just use, for example, Kensington Market, there's a lot of great-looking murals and I wouldn't even want to call it graffiti. It's art. And I certainly like this idea. And I guess we could, and I don't know the expenditure for some of these artists, if that would pay for the artist and the material. So I don't know if that's part and parcel of this program.
Yes, thank you councillor for the question. Certainly, the maintenance, I'll call it, of the art is something that has been factored in and is being considered. Vandalism does happen. We don't tend to publicize it within the region. It's dealt with quietly. We're not looking to give attention to those who would vandalize facilities or art in any way. But part of the process is going to be for, again, when I call them the asset owner, the asset manager, to anticipate regular maintenance costs for the art that's being installed. Some have none. We have paintings throughout the region that were publicly, I'll say commissioned, but instances where we had an artist come in and work with members of the community to create a piece of art. That's one, the lighted piece that you see right here in regional headquarters next to the public front counter. No issues with vandalism within a regional building. But things get bumped, things get, substances get spilled, they need to be cleaned. And so those are incorporated into the facility, to the facility owner's budget as a result of hosting that piece of art. So the short answer to your question is yes, it has been considered, it is being anticipated. We're well aware of the urban art that exists throughout the region. And I'll say that is part of the strategy, is working with those, if you call them graffiti artists, I believe there's a different terminology, but urban artists. It tends to lend a lot of credibility to the art and those are much less likely to be vandalized because the artist recognized the developer as being part of their own community. And it's an inherent culture within the artistic community. So those are all things that we're looking at and considering in the development of the policy.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Roy.
Thanks. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to just give some reference to some of our experience with Whitby with one in particular, the sculpture which is at our celebration square, but also our bellbox murals that are around our community. I was involved in both of the projects. Majority of the funds were fundraised by community members. We did have some funding, especially for the sculpture, that we did commit to that from the town. But for the bellbox murals, there was no money used from municipal tax base. And businesses around the community, when we went around to ask for support, were very forthcoming and we paid the artists. And I think this is one of the things that we need to remember, that as we're talking about public art, we are also talking about the individuals that need to be paid. And it is their livelihood and we need to respect that as well. I think too often, we ask them to do things for free and many are very, very willing to do so, but it is a livelihood that we do need to support. I'm very excited that we have this in place and would be very willing to partner with us and to find ways that we can have more in our community. And it's not just about the painted art or the sculpture. There are many artists within our community who would love to do more around and are always reaching out. Mayor Carter, I had the opportunity to witness at the corner of Simcoe and Taunton, the side of the storage units that are there and talked to many of the artists that came internationally to do the side of the walls there. It was phenomenal and I think we can make more of this, especially during our culture weeks, to look at different ways that we can incorporate these type of events that community members can participate in. And congratulations and thank you very much for putting this in place.
Thank you. Councillor Maryn Petrie.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I think there's probably a few of you that know this about me. I love Canadian art. I know, you know, there's a lot of art that we can appreciate as being local or Canadian, ranging from, you know, things like the Group of Seven or Norval Morisso or Carol Spendo or Maud Lewis. In this case, there could be artists locally that become as recognized as those and even the Group of Seven. We've had very famous artists in the area and we continue to. So I support the program. I know that in the early 2000s, the city of Oshawa underwent a process where our major, they were called amazing spaces, would see public art in each of those locations where we developed new public spaces. And we've carried that forward. It's been widely celebrated and it's given opportunity to local artists to showcase their cultural endeavors, their, you know, community sort of aspirations and essentially the mood of the day. And I think that ultimately, art is in the eye of the beholder. So I'm just going to ask a question because I know at the time, we, our gallery was very involved. And I know that we had a very good curator in Olex, who is, I still believe, the curator over at the station, the Whitby Gallery. And I think we have a very good network of galleries throughout the region. Just wondering through you, whether or not we're communicating or collaborating with these outstanding resources that we have in Oshawa and Whitby and other municipalities in the region to be able to bring forward these amazing pieces of art that will be hopefully developed locally and essentially celebrated in time?
Ms. Austin.
Yes, thank you. And through the chair, the short answer is yes. We do, we in fact have members of staff who are on boards of directors at local galleries, but we do work directly with them as well and they're part of the community engagement process. Thank you.
That's great. And I think it's probably reported, but we had a lot of take-up. We had a great deal of interest. There was, you know, times where we would look at what other municipalities were doing in other parts of the country and they would look at ours. I'm just wondering whether or not we're going to be reaching out or if there's going to be, I know we have an opening or a launch on the first, but what else we're going to be doing to provide exposure to these artists and to our program? Because I do think it's going to be one that hopefully, depending on the art that is showcased, sets us apart from other municipalities in a positive light.
Ms. Austin.
Thank you for the question and through the chair. Yes, the communications and engagement of the installation will be part of the program. Again, we're at the starting line, early steps in terms of putting the policy together and thinking about, you mentioned the subjectivity of art, putting in place the governance model and the juried selectors who would be responsible for reviewing various pieces. But certainly, the full communications, once the art has been developed, will run through, again, through the region's communications and engagement division.
And just wanted to just, you know, bring to light also, you know, in different eras, art is seen as being risque in some ways. We saw graffiti, like not just maybe a decade or two ago, being a huge issue. We now see it as being murals. And I think we need to consider, you know, some of the art that may get people talking to be some of the art that we focus in on. And I'm not on the panel, but I hope that the panel looks at, you know, a bigger play on the installations as opposed to playing it safe. And I think it's important for two reasons. The first is you want to have the exposure for the artists and have people speaking and talking. And I think there's always going to be a positive or a negative because it depends on who likes that form of art. But it also helps the region of Durham set itself apart from others in a very good way, I think. And as the decades proceed, I think people will look back and say, that was actually a nice piece of art. So let's not sell ourselves short.
Thank you. Councillor Dyce. So I control it from here. No, so, okay, so there you go.
It's going to take a while. Thank you, everybody. I'm very happy to see this come forward. We've had one in place in Ajax for some time. It's been very successful. We always talk about the cost, however, there's benefit to that as well and there's a lot of spinoffs, not just from art supplies and from the artists in the community, but also through tourism and economic development. And I'm wondering if you're going to do any research into that, sort of track it?
Yes, thank you and through the chair. So economic development and tourism is heavily engaged as a core member of our internal working group. And that has really been a lot of our focus on what are the community benefits in terms of, you know, we talk about things that are a little more difficult to put dollar values around, such as community building and sense of place and sense of pride. How do you quantify that in dollars and cents? It's inherently more difficult. But being a little bit obsessed about metrics and outcomes, we are looking at those elements that are a little more tangible. So we've relied heavily on the expertise within tourism and marketing within economic development to say, what are the things, where are the tourist locations, where are people going, what are the kinds of, you know, when we talk about the Green Belt Trail or various routes around, the farming routes around the region, how can we be thinking about locations that naturally tie into those where we're looking to draw people in? And where do we want more people to be to come and see the art? So absolutely, the spinoff benefits and that ability to heighten that interest among residents and visitors is something that we're considering closely. And thank you for the question.
Well, I'm pleased to hear that because I know even the everyday things, such as a simple thing like a bicycle rack can be a piece of art. There's so many ways we can incorporate it into our communities and it really is a benefit and it does bring the community together. So thank you for bringing this forward.
Thank you. And one of the things, you mentioned the bicycle racks. We'd looked at butterfly bus benches that are sometimes incorporated in other communities. And I imagine families coming together and sitting, waiting for the bus in a bench that's not, you know, a piece of plastic or even concrete, but a beautiful metal structure that's interesting and you're noticing it as you're driving by. And, you know, wanting to come and have a closer look and generating more interest and, again, building that ridership among transit. We're looking at all of these. And I will just make a final note that with the new economic development strategy, the place strategy, the creative sector is, features heavily and prominently within that. Councillor Roy talked about compensation to artists and building the art community and recognizing that expertise and the flourishing art community within Durham region. So again, we're, through that process, we're focusing again on those outcomes and metrics.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Crocker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I just, we, Ajax did a mural in our Pickering Village and it was really, really well-received. It's like the gateway to the village and it was a really, a really cool thing that we did during, I think it was during the pandemic, actually. But one of the requests that we did ask the Minister of Transportation is the ability to do murals along the entrances of, or exences off of 401. So for us going east, it's West New Road, there's a huge, huge cement wall that I thought would be a really cool idea to put, like, a diversity mural of what our town is all about and what makes up our town and that kind of thing. Of course, we never got an answer, but if you have any ins with the Ministry of Transportation, I would still really like to have something like that. It just creates an interesting thing to look at while you're waiting for the light to change, right? And it's, I think it shows, you know, like that we, that we're excited about who lives in our town and that kind of thing. So anyway, that was one of our ideas. It didn't really go anywhere. Thank you.
So maybe what we could do is put that on the list for our next conversation with our local MPPs and MPs, actually, because there is some federally owned lands in Durham region that the, creating some kind of a partnership. Would you take that as direction, Ms. Austin?
I certainly would, thank you. And there are a number of those pieces, even insofar as the sign welcoming people to Durham region. If you're simply driving along the 401, going from Toronto, maybe to Prince Edward County, it's great to know you're going through Durham. And so I completely agree with you in terms of, again, the signage, the attention to have people pause and take notice. And, you know, it's a nice segue and probably into our next report, which is Government Relations, but certainly, Chair, willing to take that and add it to our list for the Ministry of Transportation. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Chabney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think one of the things we have to look at is the economic value of some of these things. Well, it's nice to put some public art in nice places that people are already going. We also need it as an attraction point. I think we were looking at that with the murals we were trying to do downtown and then the COVID sort of way laid the program. But I think it's Guelph that does, for example, they do an event once a year similar to Oshawa's P&amp;E Festival where people come to look at our flowers from all over. They come to do an art tour of murals and things like that. And that's obviously, if they're coming from outside the region especially, that's of economic value to us, to our restaurants and our hotels and things like that. So I think we have to also focus on that aspect of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if I'm getting a nod, it'll be added to the list. So thank you. Mr. Clerk, that exhausts the speaker's list. I will call the vote on the item. All those in favor? In opposition? Seeing none, that carries. Item number 7.4, Durham Region Government Relations Update. Councillor Yamada, could you push Request to Speak, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr Chair. During the staff, taking a look at the groups that have been lobbying for the region on our behalf, AMO, where we have political representation, the mayors and regional chairs of Ontario, the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, the Greater Toronto and Hamilton Area mayors and chairs and others, we, you've spoken that, you know, we do meet with our local MPPs. And, but what I noticed here is a company called Strategy Corp. So in 2022, Strategy Corp, a government relations consulting firm, was retained, continues to work as a registered lobbyist. How much did we pay Strategy Corp from 2022?
I'll go to Ms Austin.
Yes, thank you. I'm happy to give you the exact dollar value, and then I'm not sure if the CAO would like to comment on the additional value that we're achieving from Strategy Corp, having some common representation across the region. But councillor, it's $8,000 per month.
So close to, so that was for all of 2022? So we're looking close to $100,000?
That's correct.
Are we going to be retaining them again this year?
We are in the midst of an, sorry, through the chair, we are in the midst of an RFP process, because we are approaching the $100,000 threshold. So we will have that RFP out in, I believe it's March.
So, Mr Councillor Yamada, I'll just have our CAO comment as well.
Just to comment on the value of retaining Strategy Corp and whatever company is successful in the upcoming RFP. We were, as you know, for many, many months and years, trying to advance the GO East Extension, and a number of other issues were arising that had, that involved the province and the region. We have found that Strategy Corp has been very effective in getting our message to the right people behind the scenes. And I think the fact that the GO East was formally approved and announced is a direct outcome of that partnership. So they continue to work with us and advise us on issues like Bill 23, our long-term waste manager plan, and a number of other areas, as you'll see in the report.
So would you then speak to those? Because I would think it'd be hard to sort of quantify to one specific group. This is what we've been able to achieve, when we, through that group, when it seems like a holistic plan that we have in terms of our lobbying efforts, no?
The difference through you, Mr Chair, with Strategy Corp, is that they are specifically speaking on behalf of Durham region. Advocacy through FCM, AMO, and other organizations like that, including the GTHA groups that have formed through the pandemic, tend to focus on shared issues and priorities, which is very important and has been very useful. But Strategy Corp, under our contract, is in advocating specifically for what the region views as a priority, such as the GO East Extension.
Okay. So when we talk about what we're doing in terms of this year, securing financial supports to mitigate the financial impacts of Bill 23, can you sort of speak of what preliminary meetings we have been having, and where, what we've been able to hopefully communicate to the province?
I will conceal, inform council that I have been asked to sign an NDA and have signed an NDA, so that I can have some feedback into some of the work that the province is undertaking with respect to Bill 23. So I will be very careful with respect to what I say. But Strategy Corp is often able to tell us some of the issues and challenges that the province is dealing with and advancing its priorities and legislation, and providing us with advice in terms of how to address it to ensure that Durham's interests and priorities are respected. So Bill 23, as you know, is an ongoing challenge. Actually, this afternoon, we're meeting with the CAO's chief planners, works commissioners, and treasurers from our eight local municipalities, specifically to deal with Bill 23. But that being said, Strategy Corp is advancing, getting us insight into where the province is thinking it's going in that respect. They're also very heavily engaged in the offload delay discussion with paramedics, and continue to assist us with respect to the station strategy associated with the GO East Extension. And you will be hearing more about that at the education session next week.
Thank you. In terms of Bill 39, do we have any further understanding of who the provincial facilitator will be for the Durham?
No, at this point, they are developing terms of reference, and that, those terms of reference are covered under my NDA.
Do we have any idea of when a facilitator will be appointed to the region?
I would expect this quarter, but there's been no confirmation of that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Schumer.
Thank you, Mr Chair, through you, to, I guess, the CAO. Just with respect to Strategy Corp, what takes place or what might be in the agreement to ensure that there is some conflict with another client of theirs, some kind of competing conflict? I mean, I know in some of the issues that you've laid out, there probably wouldn't be a conflicting client, or I find it hard to imagine if there would be one. But generally speaking, what is done to ensure we're not paying them to achieve a certain goal, and somebody else isn't paying them to achieve a conflicting goal?
I will pass it along to Ms Austin, but I can tell you that there actually has been an area of conflict. So Strategy Corp is not, or has not in the past, been working with us on the Upper York sewage solution, simply because they have other clients in the private sector. So they do have a conflict there. But I think Sandra can comment on precise contract clauses.
Ms Austin.
Yes, thank you. And through the chair, it is included as part of our service agreement that we have signed with Strategy Corp. They're also a registered lobbyist, so they are on record as working for the region of Durham. We can also check and see whom else they are working for. That is public information, when they're working specifically for governments, that information is recorded and available to the public. And it is part of their regular business practice as a professional lobbyist. So we have had those conversations where we might come forward and say, we have a suite of new priorities, or existing priorities, or an extension of priorities that we need to discuss. And they do take the time to go away and ensure that they're not in a conflict situation. And that is a piece of their professional responsibility that we need to rely on.
Through you, Mr Chair. Chair Henry just reminded me, they also advised us on increased funding for long-term care capital funding, as we were finding specifically with the Seton project, that there was not sufficient capital to actually build it. That did result in the report that came to you at council last month, where we received an additional $35 million through a change in provincial funding for long-term care capital projects.
Thank you. And just to follow up, and I apologize if I might have missed it in the report, but in a case where there is a conflict and they have to step away, do we have a fallback firm that we then utilize to continue whatever advocacy work might be needed on approach?
At present, that would refer back to our intergovernmental relations staff within the CAO's office. I imagine going forward, if there was a large issue that they could not advise us on, that we would probably go out to the market if we thought that would add value. But generally, we are able to use our own intergovernmental staff for those issues.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Clerk. That exhausts the lists. On item 7.4, I will call the vote. All those in favor? In opposition? Seeing none, that carries. Which moves us to a confidential matter, item 8.1. Could I get somebody to move it? Moved by Mayor Foster, seconded by Councillor Yamada. The item is now on the floor. Is there anyone wishing to go into closed session on this item? Into closed session? Is it a question of a closed nature, or is it a question that you can have with staff at an opportunity? Okay. Then in that case, on this particular item, I will call the vote. All those in favor? In opposition? Seeing none, that carries. The last item on the agenda is adjournment. Mayor Ash, seconded by Mayor Barton. On adjournment, we'll call the vote. First of all, before I call the vote, business of the day is done, Mr Clerk. I will now call that vote. All those in favor? In opposition? Seeing none, I wish you all a wonderful, safe day, and thank you. Members of council, there was a thought that this meeting might have gone a little bit longer. There is lunch on order, so if you have business within the building and want to come back, there'll be lunch available in the back room. Thank you.